Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council on Tuesday, April 8, 2025. Would the Clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharland.
Mr. Coghill.
Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Mosley.
Here.
Mrs. Kail Smith.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Here.
Mrs. Warwick.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle President.
Here.
Six Members present.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very much. Our next order of business is to amend the agenda. There's a motion to amend.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The agenda has been amended. Our next order of business is proclamations. We have two to be presented. Councilwoman Smith is not here yet, so let's move on to those being read into the record. One by Councilwoman Mosley and then two by Councilwoman Smith.
Councilwoman Mosley presents, be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Saturday, April 5, 2025 to be Dr. Christine White Taylor Day in the City of Pittsburgh. Councilwoman Smith presents, be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Tuesday, April 8, 2025 to be the Honorable Robert J. Colville Day in the City of Pittsburgh. And Councilwoman Smith also presents, be it further resolved, that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Tuesday, April 8, 2025 to be the Honorable Mary Jane Bowes Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
May we have a motion to approve all three proclamations?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All three have been approved. That takes us, we'll move on now to, Councilwoman Sharland is not here, so we'll hold our Will of Council, so we'll move on to public comment. I would like to remind everyone that rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which may be for City Council and profanely will not be permitted. Once you recall, please restate your name, provide your neighborhood for the record. You'll be given three minutes to speak. Our first registered speaker is Azasha Minifield. I don't see her online. Is Azasha Minifield with us? If not, our next registered speaker is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller.
Dr. Royal Lynn Miller, Germantown, and London, United Kingdom, Berlin, Germany. I think they should be allies of Pittsburgh, the city. I'm a Global Intelligence Society candidate for President 2028. GlobalInformationIntelligenceNetwork.net, no spaces. April 2025 is European Intelligence Month, which I founded in 2010. Europe is the second region for science nobelus. North America, the Americas is number one, and that is led by the United Kingdom and Deutschland. Concerns of council include the vote and local city security. This is consistent with my initiative, one vote by voter verification for whom, in order to avoid misapplication and misplacement of votes, which is currently forbidden across the United States, every county, including Allegheny. In the supra-local US constitutional state derived from the 1789 US Constitution, the security of US country is founded on the exercise and control of the vote by citizens who authorize and operationalize actions to protect and provide via a vote founded, elected, non-secret US Congress law warrant for, by judge regarding surveillance. In the supra-local US national security state derived from the 1947 National Security Act and amplified by the 1978 Foreign Intelligence Surveillance Act and the 2001 Patriot Act, the security of the US nation overall is operationalized by a non-elected, secret, national security bureaucracy centered in the National Security Agency and Cyber Command, which is here in Pittsburgh, requiring no citizen vote. This is supra-law, FISA warrant, a national security letter, warrantless surveillance of us. In the local Pittsburgh constitutional state equivalent derived from the 1974 Pittsburgh Home Rule Charter, which is parallel to the national constitution, the security of Pittsburgh City is founded in the vote by citizens who authorize the HRC via referendum and operationalizing actions for us in a voted-in, non-secret Pittsburgh City Council. On the Pittsburgh local security state equivalent, in that the 2024 Department of Public Safety Bureau of Police Manual of Rules and Procedures is the foundation of the secret security protocols of this city and not available to the citizens.
Thank you very much. That exhausts our list of registered speakers. If there's anyone in chambers wishing to speak, please come forward at this time. Also provide your neighbor neighborhood for the record. You'll be given three minutes to speak.
Hi, I'm Bernadette from Beachview. The promised cuts to our transit authority will hurt our city, your people. With federal cuts, our state is overwrought with demands to make up the loss. PRT cuts will affect our largest employers. Those tax-free end up passing their luxury onto our low, medium-income folks, one way or the other. They are tax-free, but their staff and their patients pay taxes. Just UPMC alone employs over 92,000. Hospitals' support staff take public transit. Seniors need churches, especially today, for food cuts. The Green Tree Bus serves Catholics, Latter-day Saints, Presbyterian, and non-denominational. Bauer Hill Bus, filled with city folks wearing scrubs, going to Asbury Heights, to Kane Boulevard, to all the senior care facilities. Let's make these big tax-free corporates like UPMC, AGH, et cetera, be part of the solution. I came up with an idea, and I first ran it past my Senator, who helped me call it what it should be. Create a funds dedicated to subsidizing fares account. Make these tax-frees be part of the solution, not a block grant where monies are tossed in and grabbed, but actual funds dedicated to subsidizing fares to fix this deficit. Get the non-tax corporations, hospitals, entities to be part of the solution. Funds dedicated to subsidizing fares account. You are, you are some of the most brilliant minds. I've sat here and I've watched you. I know you can pick up phones and make, make calls. We need to do this for the city. We need to do this for the county. City folk work for the hospitals. Have a good day.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, Special Agent Sasha. How are you? You all right? I'm so glad you're here, Teresa. Our last encounter was different. I returned to send during the voodoo hex's curse ascend towards me, 100 million billion trillion googlyplex, and whoever's sending it, Lord, throw them into a lake of fire. Lord, you sent me here for a reason. You really did. Psalm 119:18 says, "Open my eyes that I may see wonderful things in your law." Your law. That's amazing. Apparently, there's a lot of laws being broken around here. Last time I was here, Mosley, we shined a light on you, going from $93,000, you were asking for some equipment and trucks and whatever else for the community, whatever, to $7,000,999,000 and some change. Really? There's too many people in the street for you to have that kind of increase and think you're still going to Vegas. You're not. I promise you, you're not. And if you do, I'm gonna put so many eyes on you, they're gonna see exactly every penny you spend. Play with me and see. Proverbs 17:23 says, "The wicked accept bribes in secret to pervert the course of justice." You guys do that a lot. Y'all real good at it. How are you having court sessions about me without me being present? That's amazing. I think it's amazing. How I'm getting downloads. He gives me everything I need to know about y'all, because he's the one sent me here to shine a light on your injustice, your fraud, and everything else you're doing. And that's what I'm gonna keep doing every time I come here. Ed Ganim, you asked for $2 million and some change from the 2024 Capitol Budget. Do you not know, it is now April 2025. Why are you going into Capitol 2024 Budget for money? Then you come a whole nother week, and one million more. Do you think you're going to Hawaii as well? You are not. You will not. There's too many people out here on the street for y'all to be getting this money and not using it for what you need it for. Now, he's going into a whole year before we're standing here getting money. Really? Y'all ain't using the money. What y'all supposed to be using it for? That's why he's doing that. And I just needed to shine a light on that as well, because it's a no. Like, somebody's gonna see and hear what I'm saying. It's too many people in the street. Y'all don't come in here and get nobody off the street. Do it, please. It's bad. If you don't, please get ready to come out here with us, please. In Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please. Seeing no further speakers, we will return to proclamations, and we have two to be presented by Councilwoman Smith. Good morning.
Colleen, do you want to come forward? And actually, we actually have the People for 412 Thrive. Do you want to come forward too? Would you both at the same time? Colleen, I want you to come up, because this is about breast cancer, too, if you don't mind. I just wanted Colleen to be here, because Colleen is actually a survivor, a recent survivor of breast cancer. So I want to thank her for being here and for educating a lot of us on her Facebook page about some of the things she's going through. Whereas, 412 Thrive was established as a nonprofit in 2020 during the COVID pandemic by women who longed for connection with others facing breast cancer and aim to build a supportive community for those in similar situations. And whereas, 412 Thrive supports and empowers individuals affected by breast cancer or genetic mutations linked to cancer, known as thrivers. In southwestern Pennsylvania, the group is committed to making a positive impact in the lives of those who it serves. And whereas, the group offers financial support for patient resources and hosts wellness events that focus on life during and after a cancer diagnosis. They are dedicated to building a supportive community where everyone feels safe, included, and connected. And whereas, by offering online and in-person support, monthly gatherings, educational workshops, wellness retreats, care packages, housecleaning, and meals when needed, 412 Thrive is devoted to helping individuals do more than survive. They help them to thrive. And now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize and commend 412 Thrive for continuing to be a strong support system to make those affected by cancer feel secure. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Saturday, April 12, 2025 to be 412 Thrive Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
May we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
You're a little taller than me.
A little bit. Hi. My voice carries, so I think, I think I'm good. Thank you. Okay. My name is Rachel. I am blessed that I do not have breast cancer. Christine, who is also on the board with me, serving 412 Thrive, we have been so grateful that we have not had the journey that so many of the women who are part of 412 Thrive have gone through. We are over 800 women now in the organization who need this as pre-vivors or as cancer survivors who every day are worried about what's next. And it's truly an honor to work with these women, to see their strength and their resilience, and what they're willing to do to help other women who have gone through such a thing. And so, with the help of folks like Christine and myself, we're trying to get the word out so that people know that these resources exist and obviously raise funds so that we can help get rid of such an awful, awful disease that so many have faced. So thank you so much for this honor, and we will continue to do as much work as possible.
Just say a few words.
My name's Colleen Bowers. I just recently had breast cancer a year and a half ago, and successfully they took everything out. The only problem is, I just wanted to point out to people, people don't, they hear breast cancer, they had surgery, they had mammogram, you know, the whole nine process. But when you have invasive, it can come back and, and further down, even though they got everything out. So I was not aware of your organization, but I will deeply help you in committing and trying to get the word out and on top of any fundraising or anything that I can do for you. And I just wanted to point that out to the.
Well, I'll wait for Colleen to exchange information, then come up and present her proclamation. Now, Colleen's been through a lot in her life, and she's one of those people that she shares her stories with people. A lot of us don't like to share things. A lot of us like to keep things to ourselves. Colleen not only shares her stories, but she raises money for people that are fighting some of the things like breast cancer awareness, Centers for Victims. Her daughter was, do you mind if I say, her daughter was killed in a domestic violence situation, and since then, she has been raising money for Center for Victims and for women and domestic violence survivors, period, across Allegheny County. And she's just, between that and battling cancer, she has just been an amazing human being. And she's involved in all the Irish stuff, which is why the AOH, is that it? AOH? Is here too, as well. So, I mean, she's got a lot of support from a lot of people who appreciate all that she has done over the years and for sharing her stories and making it something that benefits others, taking her pain and making it a gain for somebody else. Whereas, the National Crime Centers Rights Week, NCVRW, is observed annually in the month of April and is dedicated to honoring crime victims and survivors while raising awareness about their rights and services. NCVRW will be observed in 2025, the week of April 6 through the 12. And whereas, this year's theme is kinship, because this week is also about recognizing the efforts of those who support the victims and survivors of crime. And whereas, crime affects individuals, families, and communities in profound and varied ways, often leaving lasting physical, emotional, and social challenges. And whereas, the concept of kinship highlights the bonds that create pathways to support, resources, and collective strength among survivors, advocates, and communities. And whereas, kinship lies in the, at the heart of the victim advocacy, guiding trauma-informed support that honors each survivor's unique journey. Through the strength of connection, we, we create peer networks and community partnerships that empower survivors, foster resilience, and open doors to healing. And whereas, kinship reminds us of the importance of listening to every voice and the power that we have to create lasting change when we work together. And now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby reaffirm its commitment to supporting crime victims and standing in, within kinship with survivors. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare the week of April 6 through the 12, 2025, as National Crime Victims Rights Week in the City of Pittsburgh.
May we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations.
Again, my name's Colleen Bowers. I'm very active in the Irish community, and the reason why you see these two gentlemen dressed alike is the Pennsylvania State Ancient Order of Hibernians President, Denny Maher, and also the Allegheny County President of the Ancient Order of Hibernians, Bob Kelly. They joke that they're my eye candy. But these two gentlemen and the organizations for the Ancient Order of Hibernians, it's not just in Pennsylvania, but nationally, and the Ladies Ancient Order of Hibernians have always been a supportive factor since my daughter died. And my mission in my statement is to promote domestic violence awareness. And to the point that we did get a PA House Resolution 332 adopted through Dan Dease, my state rep. So, these are the things I've been doing on top of all kinds of other things. Everybody knows me. I'm not afraid to speak. I'm not afraid to say hello. I need money, whichever the case may be. With all that said, though, it boils down to, I approached Teresa to remind that this was Crime Victims' Week. It's not just domestic violence, it's all victims of violence. And I applaud Teresa for taking the gauntlet and running with this. And I hope from the future that the Council will always remember this week. It's always in April. Sometimes the dates change. That you will always remember them and do some kind of a proclamation so it's out there in the public forum. Other than that, Stephanie Fox was going to be here from the Center for Victims, and I cannot say enough about the Center for Victims with their resources for all victims of violence, between housing and so on. But she broke her leg, so she had a little bit of difficulty today. So that's why she is not here, to be here, you know, present. But other than that, I thank Teresa. I thank the Council. I thank my brother Hibernians for always being there and a supportive fact point. And that's it. Thank you.
And I could tell you, Councilwoman Coghill already promised me he'd take it up next year.
to be read in its entirety, or that now therefore be it?
In its entirety, please. Thank you. Councilperson Sharland presents, whereas Pittsburgh's Home Rule Charter states that a responsible city is one which expects aggressive action from its official towards the achievement of excellent health, safety, and conditions conducive to human growth. And whereas, the Pennsylvania Constitution outlines the right to the preservation of the national scenic, historic, and aesthetic values of the environment. And whereas, this spring, melting snow has once again revealed filthy hillsides, trails, alleys, rights-of-way, catch basins, and vacant land to be covered in trash on the magnitude warranting a state of emergency and action by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. And whereas, unaccumulated refuse is described as slow violence and damages community health and perceptions contributes to disorder and curbs in economic development, leading to disinvestment, especially in low-income communities. And whereas, previous monitoring and litter assessment efforts by the city have highlighted concentrations of litter in our most impoverished neighborhoods, often home to minority and immigrant neighbor, neighbors. And whereas, more than 1,110 illegal dump sites have been identified in Pittsburgh since 2005, with more than 850 sites cleaned up. And whereas, not all dump sites have been recorded, much less cleaned, and recurring dumping at these known locations suggests the true scale of the problem is much larger than reported. And whereas, while the work of nonprofit and community organizations, volunteers, and the City's Department of Public Works to clean our neighbor, our neighborhoods deserves acknowledgement, these efforts are clearly not sustainable in fulfilling our responsibility to residents to maintain acceptable levels of cleanliness. And whereas, in recognition of the city's limitations, we ask the Governor and the Commonwealth to lend all available equipment, contracts, and funding, and move the urgency to clean up and resolve these conditions harming public health and ruining the aesthetics of the environment. And now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh calls on the Governor to enact Article 4, Section 20, declaring the state of litter and trash on the ground in Pittsburgh of such magnitude to constitute an emergency and render essential the Commonwealth's supplementation of municipal resources to remove trash debris from publicly and privately-owned land and to restore public health in our most livable city.
May we have a motion?
So moved.
To approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, the first, the sponsor?
I just want to thank members for supporting this today. You're gonna hear me beat this drum continually about the state of our city. It is, I, I had the opportunity over the weekend, I was in Columbus for a day. Being as filthy as we are is a choice, and we need to stop making that choice. So I am going to continue to work to make sure that our neighborhoods, all of our neighborhoods, are cleaned up, especially with the idea that the draft is coming here. We need to make sure that downtown is not the only neighborhood that we're proud of, that we can be proud of all 90 of our neighborhoods and, and by removing the, the trash and dump sites around there. So I'm, I'm hell-bent on this issue, and, you know, I hope that other members will join me in that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So I have Councilwoman Warwick, followed by Councilwoman Smith, followed by Councilwoman Gross, followed by Councilwoman Coghill. Councilwoman Warwick?
Yes, hi. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Yeah, apologies. I have a sick kid at home. So, yeah, this came in yesterday, so I didn't really have the chance to review it or discuss it with the Councilman, but I, I would actually like my name to be removed. Not because I don't care about the issue of litter, I, something I care deeply about. But I just, I feel that, you know, we're somewhat abusing the ask of our Governor to declare a state of emergency, you know, which has been reserved for incidents like Snowmageddon in 2010 and the collapse of the Fern Hollow Bridge in 2022. Also, you know, re, you know, with regard to Bernadette's comments earlier, I think that we really should be asking our Governor and our state delegation at this moment in time to stay laser-focused on the transit funding crisis that we are facing that could result in really the complete dissemination of our public transit systems. I'd also just, you know, would like to, to remind members and, and Councilwoman Sharland that this body recently voted on allocating $456,000 to the Community Neighborhood Stewardship Program through our Public Safety Department. That was awarded to the Center for Employment Opportunities, or CEO Works, you know, which does workforce development for folks coming out of the carceral system. And so they are, they, you know, they're now working to clean up garbage and litter in our most underserved communities. in our most underserved communities. And they are starting a multi-week cleanup in Homewood, actually, this week. So I'm sure, you know, that if the councilman reaches out to the Public Safety Team, they'd be happy to consider Knoxville and other, or other communities in his district next. I also think that it is worth noting that, you know, while it certainly isn't enough, our DPW teams have nearly tripled the number of clean and leans that they're completing, you know, on private property since the pandemic. And if done, I believe it's 270 clean leans in 2024. Here in Pittsburgh, we have negligent property owners who leave vacant properties covered in garbage. We have too many residents who think it's okay to dump illegally and throw garbage out their car windows. We absolutely need to implement DPW's gold plan, which would create, you know, a dedicated litter picking crew for the city. And we need to mobilize our Clean Pittsburgh Commission to expand education and outreach around the litter and illegal dumping across our communities. I totally agree with the councilman that it is not enough to count on our volunteer residents and our nonprofits. You know, shout out to Paul Loriot, North Side, Chris Armstrong in Squaw Hill, Allegheny Cleanways, Friends of the Riverfront, and so, so many others. But I do feel that this is a solvable problem and one that we are really very close to tackling. And I look forward to continue working on it together with my fellow council members and our, our local partners and DPW and our Public Safety Teams. So that's it for me, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Smith.
Thank you. I actually want to go back a little bit and just give a little bit of history, my time here, Councilwoman Charlin, I actually started the anti-litter campaign, the grass-cutting campaign, the clean and lean program, the e-recycling program, and various other programs to worry about litter and all the blight across the city of Pittsburgh. So although I appreciate that we're now saying that the state needs to pitch in, part of my problem in my district is state, state roads. We have West Carson Street, which is filled with litter and graffiti. We have the West End Bridge, which is filled, the whole walkway, you can't even walk on it, it's filled with litter. Bicycleists, you know, call all the time, they can't ride the bike going across it. So there's all sorts of issues, and I, if, all I would really like for them to do is take care of their part in the city of Pittsburgh, and then if we could focus on our part in the city of Pittsburgh, it'd be amazing. But I don't think that everything is about, and they did, you know, yes, we've increased the clean and lean program, but, you know, after the pandemic, but we stopped during the pandemic, so it's not an increase, it's just picked it back up. And so, but, so we see some of that, and you can see when they're working. When our crews come in, I have not seen the city look as good as it did when Kevin Queakley ran the red-up crew. And he would go in and just clean out an entire community. I remember one time he removed 700 tons of debris from Sheridan and boarded up a gazillion homes, took a walk-through with BBI, they made sure that they worked, walked through with people, they had the community walking through with them so they could give resources to people. It was a combination, and it was a collaborative effort. It's not going to take one thing, or one group, or one, one effort. This has been going on for a long time. But we need, and we haven't had in all those years, is the enforcement of the laws and the educational component. Because a lot of the people littering and doing some of the things that we're complaining about are, I think, are between the ages of 14 and 25. So education piece is important and making sure people understand. This past weekend, we had a tremendous amount of young people, and I want to acknowledge them, Hope for Tomorrow Kids and the kids from the West End Boxing Academy at Langley, where they did the garbage derby in Sheridan, the Sheridan Garbage Derby. And there were, it was the biggest crowd they ever had, and they had a ton of kids from Hope for Tomorrow in the boxing program that were eager to clean up, eager to participate in the community, and wanting to see there be, wanting the community to be cleaned that way all the time, and wanting to be a part of the solution in the community. So I do think an education component is what is needed more than anything, but I do think we have to have enforcement. There are cameras that we had, there, we should be enforcing the illegal dumping that's occurring in the city of Pittsburgh. And Missy Rosenthal, I do want to say, she ran the anti-litter campaign, she lives in Councilwoman Coghill's district, she's also out with breast cancer. So she's having, you know, a rough time, so my thoughts and prayers are definitely with Missy. But I want to make sure that we acknowledge her work and what she's done to start that program. Because when she was there, she was out there picking up the litter, she was out there with cameras, she was out there catching people, and she was also out there trying to educate people in the schools. She worked with kids in different schools across the city, and she got them involved in the cleanup part. So while I support Councilwoman Charlin in this today, I just really have deep concerns about the way we're doing this, and I'd like to know what the status is of the graffiti busters, because I haven't seen this much graffiti in the city in a very, very long time. And I think that there was a lot going on around that. I'm not sure I heard, you know, I've heard different things, we have a lot of abandoned vehicles, and a lot of those vehicles need, we pulled our complaints of all our unresponded issues over the past few years. There are 25 pages of abandoned vehicles, 25 pages of vehicles that still need towed. So that, they are definitely part of the problem, so I wish that we would look at a, at a bigger picture, a more comprehensive picture. And we, instead of putting all these efforts, you know, separately, we would combine them and really work together with the state, because it's not just the state's responsibility, it's not just the city's responsibility, and we have a lot of county roads, so it's also not just the counties. So it'd be nice if we worked collectively and with various departments to come up with a better plan in general, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you, I appreciate my, my councilmember's knowledge and attention to this matter. I think there's a lot of, of really good things that have been said also by Councilwoman Warwick and Councilwoman Smith, but I would also like my name removed from the will of council, thank you. That's all, Mr. Chair, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Coghill.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I want to start out with saying, you know, I applaud you, Councilwoman Charlin, I really do. You know, this is nothing new for him. Most of us, I think, were here when he got sworn in, he stood up there when he's swearing onstage and said, "The city is filthy, and I want to clean it up." I haven't forgotten that, and I really appreciate your efforts and passion that you're putting toward this. As you know, I started my own cleanup crew in my own district, only because I just couldn't stand the sight of it anymore, I really couldn't. We clean up, we focused on more so properties that our Public Works employees are not to go on. We go on private property, we go Penn dot property, and I agree with you, Councilwoman Kil Smith, yeah, it's the county and the state that are the biggest abusers, and if they could clean up their roads as well as they plow them, I would be happy.
Well, I want to be clear, they're not the biggest abusers, but they just have their own responsibilities, too.
Yes, they do, and they don't take care of them. So, so we'll pitch in, we clean up garbage wherever it is, and I try to do areas that, again, that our Public Works crews are kind of forbidden to do. That being said, our Public Works crews, I want to thank, you know, Director Hornstein, I want to thank Jeff Cook, and I want to thank John McClory. They have been fantastic, I found partners in them. So we bag it, we put it on the side of the road, they come pick it up, or they'll come and finish an area, so, so we've created a good partnership with them, and I'm thankful to them for that. If council, this, if this bill helps us be able to more legally go on private properties, go in and just clean it up, because it truly is a health hazard. We were on a private property yesterday, and, you know, it's, it's just, it's really a health hazard issue. People have to live next to it, and they don't, they don't want it, and they don't care who cleans it up, they just want it cleaned up. So, so I've been cleaning it up, and I'm not worried about lawsuits or anything like that, they can sue me, in fact, I'm looking for them. So, you know, we're wanting to know where they are, we want them to clean it up. So again, I will wholeheartedly support this, I thank you for your efforts, and I hope this can remove some red tape in us cleaning up the entire city, so, thanks again.
Thank you, any further discussion, Councilman Mosley?
Yeah, I just want to say, I truly appreciate Councilman Charlin's concerns on this issue and your steadfast commitment to this issue, that's one of the reasons why I enthusiastically supported the quality-of-life legislation we passed recently, but I would like, you know, my name to be removed a, as a sponsor, not because I disagree, I wholeheartedly agree and look forward to continuing working with Councilman Charlin, you know, on these issues, but I am, you know, concerned about the state of our public transit, and I do feel as if we make an ask of this magnitude to the governor, I would prioritize public transportation, I don't know how many opportunities we're going to have to go back to the well, but, Councilman Charlin, I look forward to continue working with you, you know, on these issues, and, you know, it's not that I'm against it, or I even disagree, you know, with you rising to this level, but I do think that, you know, to declare a state of emergency, I do think we need to prioritize public transit, you know, in this, in this current moment, but, you know, I applaud Councilman Charlin's steadfast dedication, you know, to this issue, and I look forward to continue working with him, thank you.
Thank you, any other comments, first round, I got you second round. If not, I'll quickly chime in and maybe offer what I would consider to be a potential compromise, Councilman Charlin? One, just to Councilman Coghill's point, this won't allow the city, and feel free to correct me if I'm wrong, this will not allow, this will not empower the city to go on the private property to do more cleaning, rather, it's a request to the state to come in and assist and bring resources where the city, and supplement the resources that the city may have.
So, I, sorry, were you pausing, or I?
Go ahead.
Okay, I, no, it is, it is, I'm not specific in cutting through, you know, how we want to cut through red tape, I'm asking for logistical support, something like that might be what we consider logistical support, but I don't know what all the, the state can offer us. My, my hope here is that the, by making this declaration, that we can ask for the assistance of the state, which there is precedent for elsewhere, so.
Thank you, if, I'm not aware of precedent, I would love to learn about it, that's my own ignorance. With that being said, one, let me just, you have been beating this drum since you first took office, so I believe you'll be consistent in that, and I believe in many respects, you're making your predecessor very proud. This time of year, almost every year, Councilman Kraus would talk about, once the snow leaves, once you can see through the trees how awful our hillsides look, right? And this was something he often and frequently talked about, and you're continuing that work, so I congratulate you for that. With that being said, specific to the will of council, I actually agree with your sentiment, and I agree with your ask, and I agree with 95% of what is written here. Based on what I've heard from members, based on my own concern about declaring a state of emergency for litter, prior to this, the first, well, since 2010, we had Snowmageddon, which was declared a state of emergency, we had COVID, which was our next state of emergency, then the Fern Hollow Bridge, and then the Second Avenue Shelter, I believe those are the four that we've had. And I agree with Councilman Mosley and the others that if we're going to ask for a state of emergency, if we were asking one for our hillsides that are falling down, that would be understandable, because it's literally a serious, we're talking about saving lives at that point, even if we're talking about transportation in many respects, if we followed it all the way out, we are talking about saving lives. So I do have a concern about asking for a state of emergency for, for litter. If my friendly recommendation would be to slightly reword it, so that your last paragraph read, "Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh calls on the governor to," and I would remove the state of emergency portion, and go to where you finish it off and go, "render essential Commonwealth supplementation of municipal resources to remove trash debris from publicly, privately owned land and to restore public health in our most livable city." I think that is completely reasonable, and I think that's a fair ask. I don't think we should be declaring a state of emergency at this point. That's my only, my goal to try to thread the needle to get a body to fully support your will of council, which I think, by and large, we all agree with the sentiment of it. I think some of us just have a concern about the state of emergency portion. Second round, Councilwoman Smith.
Thank you, I just want to clarify a few things. The state, we work really well with the state in our side of town. We do work really well with Dan Deasy, Senator Fontana, and John McClory does an amazing job on our side, as a matter of fact, he's cleaning up two dump sites today in Sheridan, so I do want to say that. But we have the right to go on private property if it's a public safety concern, you have that right, we do it now. We used to have help from the county in terms of hoarding and those types of properties, and they stopped that. So they have left the city of Pittsburgh with absolutely no resources to handle mental health calls or mental health issues with, in terms of hoarding. And you can see, go on Stratmore Street in Crafton Heights, two homes side by side, and that what people are living next to, and I have sent that over to the Public Safety Department, and the chief of the fire bureau has the authority to go in and make sure that that property is either cleaned up or demoed, because it becomes now a safety concern for our firefighters and for the residents, you know, living nearby. So when there's a public health concern, they do have a right to go on private property, they do have some rights to do some things. I think we use all these different things as excuses not to do some stuff, but the fact of the matter is, this has been an issue for, since I've been here, 16 years, and we still have not managed to make it such a priority that we're going on to the private properties and the blighted properties to clean them up and to make the area safe. So why, I'm going to support Councilwoman Charlin, because I know that his heart's really in this, and he wants to do, I know his intentions are good in wanting to see something done here, I wanted to make sure that I also brought out that we have some responsibilities. I think what we need to do, truthfully, is to sit down all together, and, you know, we do with our briefings, and come up with better plans for handling blight, including vacant properties, you know, the debris on the side of the roads, graffiti, all those things are together, they're not individual, they're not isolated, they're things that work together against the community. And so I think if we would come up with something better together, I think that would be our part. I'm all for helping to clean up, I've been doing it for years, but it's, it's really getting, it's, it's just disgusting, because it's not isolated, it's, it's all over the place, you could see it, and you could see the blight, and residents are complaining about it, kids are complaining about it, and, and Councilman Coghill's actually cleaning up sites himself, and I'm getting all kinds of alkylates for him, for, for everything he's been doing, he's out there actually doing it and cleaning it up. So, and I know we all participate in cleanups, so I just think that we, it would be better off if we would sit down together and try to come up with a better solution, and put all these programs and all these efforts more, you know, unified and together, so that they're working hand in hand and not against one another, or waiting for somebody to respond while you're waiting. I mean, I'll show you an email I sent over a month ago for properties on, on Stratmore Street and Crafton Heights, they're still sitting there, and they're disgusting, and poor kids have to walk by it every day. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Coghill.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I first want to say, you know, when I agreed to sign on to Councilman Charlin's bill, not only am I enthusiastic about the same, I have the same interest in cleaning the city of Pittsburgh up, you know, I also felt that in no way did I feel that this would be sidetracking the governor from supporting financially our transit system just because a state of the emergency tag is on it. State of emergency doesn't necessarily mean financial means of great abundance, and I don't think you specified that in any which way in the bill, at least not that I caught. So, and I would have a hard time supporting it myself, honestly, but, you know, I always say, it's, costs nothing to pick trash up, it's really cheap, and state of emergency means for me, let's cut red tape, let's make sure the county and state cleans their roads up, and I'll leave it up to Councilwoman Charlin whether he wants to keep that tag on there or not, but in no way do I feel, or I felt, that this would be interfering with funding that would go through transit or landslides or anything of that nature, so. And I want to say one other thing, you know, we clean up sides of roads, we clean up private property, we clean up everywhere, but I will tell you, I'm getting a small, very tiny percentage of what's really there. Most of these roads, you know, I get alongside the road and about four or five feet in, I get what you could see. What I get is probably about 20% of what is actually out there, I will tell you. And all these roads that are the main problem areas, usually roads coming in and out of our neighborhoods, and, and all of these roads, you know, beyond what you can see is, again, 70% of where the real trash is. So we need a combined effort, it's Public Works, it's too big for Public Works, I will tell you, we need, or, or we have to focus solely on that, which I believe, you know, Director Hornstein would be willing to do, but we have to almost put resources down over the hill into the woods, and we'll bring out so much more than what we're actually bringing out. So, and I think when you say Councilman Kraus, you know, this time of year, I always notice that, and obviously, it's the vegetation, right? And that's why we're on a blitz in my district right now to clean at least alongsides the roads, because I know, you know, another three, four weeks, once that vegetation starts, we don't see it. I know it's there, and that still bothers me, but, you know, typically, you don't see it as much because of the vegetation. So I look forward to Um, so I look forward to making the city clean. I look forward to supporting Councilman Charlin's efforts in doing so, at least in, you know, his district. And, um, yeah, and again, I'd like to talk further about a deeper clean where 70% of what we are picking up is not being picked up. And that's where it's a public health, safety issue, I believe. So, um, okay, that's it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gross.
Again, I want to say that I think this is a really good conversation and just council members kind of sharing, um, the problems that they are seeing and also other programs that are working, including city departments in their district, is, is really helpful, and I've taken a lot of notes. Um, I'll just throw in one example that I wasn't going to mention, but, um, on illegal dumping, um, I have a request in because I just got a report from neighbors this weekend that they've seen landscaping companies dumping their waste into catch basins, into the storm drains of our sewer system that we spend money cleaning out, right? That money comes from us, right, from your, from your PWSA bills, right, to, that we have to replace those storm drains, um, that we buy large vacuum trucks at PWSA to vacuum out clogged sewers, that when both either the drain or the entire sewer line, main sewer line that's under your road is backed up, all of that water comes up and you've got flooding on your roads. When that happens all winter long, it busts up, freezes and thaws, busts up your streets. That's costing us money too. So, I just, that was a new one to me, uh, that we actually have people, I've had reports of vendors from food trucks dumping all of their cooking oil into catch basins, right? We've certainly had, uh, reports of broken catch basins because of large vehicles driving over them, those kinds of things. We spend millions of dollars replacing the actual infrastructure alone of just to have like the stronger, newer, um, you'll see them someplace with the big metal grates. Um, and so it's just, it just kind of boggles the mind, the number of things that we have to be vigilant about. And so I just thought I'd throw that one in there for the discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Councilman, uh, Charlin, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, so, you know, I appreciate comments from members here. Um, and, you know, I, I do firmly believe that, especially when we consider all of the detrimental impacts to trash, between the health impacts from, you know, plastic leaching into our waters, um, the, the, uh, economic impacts, the public safety impacts of the strong correlation between trash and violence. Um, I do believe that this is a state of emergency. However, um, I will, uh, take the council president's advice, and if we want to, uh, strike the state of emergency off of this, um, you know, my, my intent, my heart still believes that this is a state of emergency. This is a five alarm fire. Uh, this is something that we need more help than we are able to, to get. Um, things that we can do on the margins, uh, you know, I, like hiring CEO works and, and bringing in some, some great folks, but some non-union folks, uh, to help out in our cities. That's great, but that's not enough. What we're doing right now is not nearly enough. Um, and the purpose of a system is what it does. Our systems are created right now to allow our cities to be filthy. And I, I can't stand by that. But, uh, I'm obviously very impassioned about this. If it would, uh, make the council president feel better, I'd be happy to remove the state of emergency from this. But, you know, I want all members to know, and I want the governor to know that I believe this is, uh, the state of emergency. And I also believe that someone with a capacity of the, uh, of the governor has the ability to both walk and chew gum at the same time. I don't think that this would at all impede a public transit crisis. Um, I just don't believe that that's, that's the case here. But happy to make that concession. Uh, Yeah, I, I don't, I don't know how that works, actually.
That was going to be my question for the clerk. If this were legislation, I would need to have a written amendment. Striking language for a will of council, am I able to do that? Okay. So, the clerk informs me that because it's a will of council, we can't strike language. Um, so with that, does that require a vote, Madam Clerk? I would think so. Does that require a vote to strike the language? Okay. So, if someone, I can't do it. If someone would offer a motion to strike the language, simply declaring the state of emergency, keeping everything else intact.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion to strike the part of the sentence in the, um, now the appropriate resolve that begins, um, after calls on the governor to, and then the strikeout begins with the word enact.
Second.
And then, well, I have to say when it ends. So, I was just giving the clerk time to catch up. I was like watching her write. I asked him, I asked him, Councilwoman, he didn't want to. Um, so, the strikeout begins with the word enact. So, the motion is to strike beginning with the word enact and continuing through magnitude constitute, constitute an emergency and, and then ends.
Correct. You would keep, render.
And then they will keep, render essential the Commonwealth supplementation of municipal resources.
Thank you. Is there a second? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any further discussion on the will of council as now amended? Madam Chair.
I'm sorry, I just want to thank, um, Councilman Charlin because he's, he's definitely come through and, um, has made this a real priority for him. And I, and I, you know, and I hate to say it, but it's election season, so we're going to see all kinds of things now. And I just want to make sure that we're not governing according to what's, you know, next happening in, in, in the elections. I want to make sure what we're doing is, you know, effective in the best, you know, course of action for the city of Pittsburgh and our residents on all sides, because I see it happening on all sides. And I just want to remind people that, um, you know, this is something that does affect our people, and it, it's been going on for a while. So, it would have been nice to see some response before this. It'd be nice to see some response after this, but I want to thank Councilman Charlin because I know no matter what happens at the end of May, he's going to continue this battle.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Councilman Coghill.
Yeah, just quickly, um, I just want to make clear, Councilwoman Kell Smith just reminded me, election season, most of my district has, has been saying, oh, he's cleaning up, it's election time. I just want to remind them, I'm unopposed in the May primary, so it's not, it's not the case. I have jackets and signs and everything. I've had them made up for at least two or three years now. And, um, and that's why I brought up Councilman Charlin. I remember him being sworn in, and I remember it being the most like refreshing thing, that I, I knew him very well before he got sworn in. But for him to address that on that podium when he was sworn in, I wanted to remind the city and his district that, uh, you know, he's been on this for a long time. This is nothing new, and it's not political, I wouldn't think. Thanks.
Thank you. I'll simply add, one, thank you for your willingness to compromise, Councilman. I do appreciate that. Two, there have been a number of us over a period of time now who have talked about the fact that we as a body at some point probably need to collectively head to Harrisburg, um, whether it's regarding transit, whether it's regarding the environment, whether it's regarding trash, where we sort of collectively put together a list and spend time there, walk in those halls so that we can indeed get the resources necessary. And I'd be more than willing to become, one, better educated on the topic so that when we're there, we could add this to the list of necessary subjects to then have a conversation with the governor about what resources can he actually bring to assist us and supplement what we currently have. With that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation?
Aye.
The will of council has been approved. Thank you. That turns us to the presentation of papers, beginning with Councilperson Charlin, Chair of Human Resources.
Councilman, Councilman, you have to say.
Councilman.
Oh, oh, sorry, no new papers. I apologize.
No worries.
He, he had lots of papers over here.
Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Safety and Wellness.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 1703, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor, the Director of the Office of Management and Budget, and the Director of the Department of Public Safety to enter into an agreement or agreements with the County of Allegheny for the purpose of receiving grant funds from the 2023 National Sexual Assault Initiative Grant in the amount not to exceed $37,000 to support overtime for PVP detectives for the investigation of old sexual assault cases, the purchasing of materials to properly furnish a soft interview room for the Pittsburgh Bureau of Police, and participation in approved training opportunities.
And Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Innovation, Performance, Asset Management and Technology.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 1723, Resolution Authorizing the City of Pittsburgh, the Director of Public Works, and the Director of Finance to enter into an easement agreement or agreements with Duquesne Light Company and Pittsburgh Water to provide, install, use, own, operate, maintain, repair, renew, and finally remove one pole anchor upon city-owned property, six poles, five anchors and overhead wires upon city-owned property, collectively the DLC assets to manage vegetation, vegetation on a certain parcel in the vicinity of the DLC assets, and to perform landscaping in the vicinity of the DLC assets at no cost to the city.
Thank you, Mr. President. May I, um, offer a motion to waive Rule Eight so this can appear on tomorrow's Standing Committee agenda?
There's a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This will appear on tomorrow's Standing Committee agenda. Takes us to Councilman Mosley, Chair of Intergovernmental Educational Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilman Mosley presents Bill Number 1704, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for 296 McKee Place at no cost to the city. Bill 1705, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for 215 South 21st Street at no cost to the city. And Bill 1706, Resolution Approving and Authorizing the Mayor, the Director of the Department of Finance, and the Director of the Department of Public Works on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement or agreements with the Allegheny County Sanitary Authority to provide permanent easements for subterranean tunnels through nine parcels of city-owned properties currently identified as Allegheny County parcel ID numbers 44S230, 7A195, 7M110-9, 7F107, 8B150, 8G250, 8D15, 7L31, and 7P200, and to accept payment therefore in the amount of $8,200.
And Councilwoman Kell Smith, Chair of Recreation, Youth, and Senior Services.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam.
Councilwoman Kell Smith presents Bill Number 1707, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of Parks and Recreation to enter into a sponsorship agreement with Dollar Bank for Cinema in the Park at no cost to the city. And Bill 1708, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of Parks and Recreation to enter into multiple sponsorship agreements enumerated herein for the Richard S. Caligari Great Race.
And Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Finance and Law.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilperson Strasburger presents Bill Number 1709, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Angelina Prior and her attorneys, Kontos, Mengine, Killian, and Hassan, for a single payment in 2025 in an amount not to exceed $80,000 in full and final settlement of litigation filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas. Bill 1710, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Gladys Sanchez in an amount not to exceed $8,301.36 over one year in full and final settlement of a claim for damage to her vehicle from an accident with a city police vehicle on December 17th, 2024. And Bill 1711, Resolution Authorizing the Execution of a Quick Claim deed conveying all of the city's right, title, and interests in and to the city's own properties located in the 12th Ward of the city and designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County as Block and Lot 124N282, 283, 288, 290, 291, 292, 293, 124P96, 125B, 128, 129, 130, 131, 132, and 134 to the Larmor Consensus Group through the Pittsburgh Land Bank for considerations set forth herein relating to the full and final settlement of cases filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas.
And Councilwoman Warwick, Chair of Public Works and Infrastructure.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Warwick presents Bill Number 1712, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor, the Director of the Office of Management and Budget, and the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to apply for grant funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources Community Conservation Partnerships Program to provide funding for the rehabilitation of Emerald View Trail Project. The grant proposal includes an ask of $250,000 with a match of $250,844.42 from the City of Pittsburgh's capital budget for a total project cost of $500,844.42 for this stated purpose. And Bill Number 1713, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Works to enter into an agreement and/or amendments with the University of Pittsburgh for the purpose of providing supplemental waste operations in the Oakland neighborhood at no cost to the city.
And Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
New papers, Mr. President.
Thank you. And on behalf of myself, I have three communications.
Council President Lavelle presents Bill Number 1714, Communication from Jake Pollak, Director of the Office of Management and Budget, Submitting to City Council the Attached Status Update from the Grants Office for the week ended April 4th, 2025. Bill 1715, Communication from Jake Pollak, Director of the Office of Management and Budget, Submitting an Acting Pay Request on behalf of the Department of Public Safety for Jennifer McDermott Grub for the Acting Pay Policy Revised in June 2018. And Bill Number 1716, Communication from Mayor Ed Gany, Submitting Division Zero Annual Memo dated March 25th, 2025.
And may we have a motion to read, receive, and file?
So moved.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Our next order of business is going to be reports of committee for final action, beginning with Councilwoman Erica Strasburger representing the Committee of Finance and Law.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilperson Strasburger presents Bill Number 1699, Reported a Committee on Finance and Law for April 2nd, 2025 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 1572, Resolution Authorizing the City of Pittsburgh to accept the sum of $316,367 in full and final settlement of litigation filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas involving the Finland Street Pedestrian Bridge. Bill Number 1660, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of Two Warrants with the Total Sum of $32,000 over one year. It is further understood and agreed that the payment schedule of the total settlement amount shall be as follows: $16,000 payable to Scott Allen Beatty, $16,000 payable to Samuel J. Cord's Esquire in full and final settlement of litigation filed in the United States District Court for the Western District of Pennsylvania. Bill Number 1661, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Office of Management and Budget to enter into an agreement or agreements with USI Insurance Services for insurance brokerage services for all necessary policy types. This shall be a no-cost agreement with the term of three years with two one-year options to extend. And Bill Number 1662, Resolution Amending Resolution 924 of 2024 effective December 18th, 2024 entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2025 Capital Budget, the Proposed 2025 Community Development Program, and a 2025 through 2030 Capital Improvement Program by increasing Liberty Avenue by 1,63,330. Program by Increasing Liberty Avenue by $1,063,333.30 to Account for Additional Federal Highway Administration Funding Being Received by the City of Pittsburgh."
You've heard the reading and title of the bill. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill, while either name is called, those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharland.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lavell President.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes.
The bill has received the legally required number of votes. It is passed finally. That takes us to Councilman Anthony Coghill, presenting the Committee of Public Safety and Wellness.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 1700, Reported a Committee on Public Safety and Wellness for April 2, 2025 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 1656, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of Public Safety to enter on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh into a professional services agreement or agreements with Kicker, Inc. to provide video production services, including conceptualization, scripting, and production planning, to create videos to aid with police recruitment efforts, total cost not to exceed $32,750 over a one-year period.
You've heard the reading and title of the bill. Is there any discussion? If none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill, while either name is called, those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharland.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lavell President.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes.
The bill has received the legally required number of votes. It is passed finally. That takes us to Councilwoman Barbara Warwick, presenting the Committee of Public Works and Infrastructure.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Warwick presents Bill Number 1701, Reported a Committee on Public Works and Infrastructure for April 2, 2025 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 1663, Resolution Amending Resolution 615 of 2024 entitled, "Resolution Authorizing the Mayor of the City of Pittsburgh and the Director of the Office of Management and Budget to Apply for a Grant from the Pennsylvania Department of Community Economic Development's Multimodal Transportation Fund for the Smallman Street Complete Street Project." The grant proposal includes an ask of $2,279,662.30 with a local match of $117,100 from the 2024 capital budget for a total grant project cost of $2,396,762.30 to accept the grant, decrease the award amount, and authorize necessary expenditures. Bill 1665, Resolution Providing for an amended reimbursement agreement or agreements with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for costs associated with the preliminary engineering, final design, right-of-way, and construction phases of the Liberty Avenue Highway Safety Improvement Program, providing for the payment of the costs thereof not to exceed $12,905,556, an increase of $5,400,000 from the previously authorized amount, and the municipal share of Commonwealth incurred costs not to exceed $29,700, an increase of $24,200 from the previously authorized amount in Resolution 600 of 2023. Future resolutions will authorize the project-specific agreements. And Bill 1666, Resolution Providing for supplemental agreement or agreements with WSPUSA, Inc. for costs associated with South Negley Avenue Bridge Project, providing for the payment of the costs thereof not to exceed $1,188,409.39, an increase of $317,588.34 from the previously executed agreement.
You've heard the reading and title of the bill. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill, while either name is called, those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharland.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lavell President.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes.
The bill has received the legally required number of votes. It is passed finally, and that takes us now to Councilman Cory Mosley, presenting the Committee of Intergovernmental Educational Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Mosley presents Bill Number 1702, Reported a Committee on Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs for April 2, 2025 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 1657, Resolution Amending Resolution 21 of 2025, which authorized a cooperation agreement or agreements with the City of Pittsburgh Equipment Leasing Authority for the purchase and leasing of vehicles, equipment, and accessories, equipment support, infrastructure, and professional services in fiscal year 2025 by increasing the authorized amount by $93,000 to purchase vehicles and equipment for the Office of Community Health and Safety for a new total sum of $7,999,319.37. And Bill Number 1658, Resolution Providing for an amended reimbursement agreement or agreements with Pittsburgh Water for costs associated with the Haverhill Project where Pittsburgh Water is overseeing the design and construction of the stormwater management components, as well as the roadway replacement and rehabilitation and has or will retain the services of a design consultant, construction management inspection consultant, and construction contractor for the project. The city will reimburse Pittsburgh Water for this work at a cost to the city not to exceed $992,628.77, an increase of $382,513.30 from the previously authorizing Resolution 404 of 2023. And Bill Number 1659, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into an agility agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for purposes of exchange, documentation, and cooperation with respect to provision of in-kind services between both parties at no cost to the city.
You've heard the reading and title of the bill. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill, while either name is called, those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharland.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lavell President.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes.
The bill has received the legally required number of votes. It is passed finally. That takes us to most recent resolutions. Is there anything for members? Councilwoman Smith.
I actually have quite a bit. Sorry. You might as well sit down. I know how this feels. I just want to talk a little bit about some of the things that have been happening and I've been seeing since this election. And a lot of it is, I know that it's related to everybody, you know, running and all the tension and council divided amongst who is supporting or whether they're supporting or whatever they're doing. But I'm going to tell you, I better not hear another word about council chasing the chief of police out of the city of Pittsburgh during any kind of comments because I have right here the text messages between me and the chief. And the last time he and I spoke was before this last email, text message, was Thursday, February 2, 2023, and that was when he was my commander. Then we didn't speak again until Wednesday, December 11. And he says, "Thank you for the chat today. I feel better and appreciate you taking the time." Does that sound like a man who was threatened? Does that sound like a man that wants to leave the city of Pittsburgh? And then I said, "It was a good meeting with you. I'll have my staff preparing the amendment regarding the chief's salary." I talked to him about the chief's salary. I thought it was unfair that we lowered his salary without even talking to him. Nobody told him that he was going to lose about $18,000 a year, but yet we paid Larry Scrotto that much more, and he came here, left here, and then came back. So I felt like Chief Ragland at the time deserved, at least because he stayed, that increased salary. And he said, "I appreciate that as well. Sorry to hear about the passing of your mother. My prayers and condolences, thank you so much." That was our only communication together in a text. So when people talk, they better know what they're saying because that's not what happened, at least not with he and I. And during a meeting with six witnesses, I said during the meeting, "If you're talking about Commander Ripple and what he wants, he doesn't want to be an assistant chief under you, and he doesn't want to be a chief under a mayor's race with a mayor's race pending. He only wants to be treated with respect. Could you meet with him and talk with him the way you have with others?" And he agreed. So I'm going to just say, you know, I don't mind if I say something, I'm going to tell you I say something. I don't care if you like if I advocate for a chief of police, just like other members called people and said, "Why don't you become the chief?" So if I want to say that, I'll say that. But I didn't, so I'm not going to, you know, take blame for something I didn't say. Then we had the interviews for the housing authority. And, you know, after those interviews, I think I explained at the time, and maybe I didn't explain well enough, so I'm going to explain right now. I sent a text message, not about the people that were there the next day, but about the people that were there the first day. And I said, "I was mostly concerned about Wasi Mohammed because I really like Wasi and I didn't want to vote against him." So I said to Dan Friesen, who now works in my office, "Is there any conflict of interest I need to be aware of because they are funded by the federal government?" And I just wanted to make sure because he works for the federal government. And he responded, you know, "Yes, and if anybody receives grant money," so I didn't realize that. He said, "Well, make sure you get the opinion from the Ethics Department," or Ethics Commission, which I failed to do. And when the vote came up, I didn't want to vote against anybody. I didn't want to wait and say, "Hold for an Ethics Commission opinion, legal opinion," because I didn't want to delay anybody else. And then I said, "I'll abstain from TMEs because the other three said they never received city dollars. She said she had in the past." But I didn't know what the Ethics Commission laws were. Like, could you have never received it? Could you have received it recently? Is there a time period? I just didn't know. And since then, I actually did talk to the Ethics Commission, and what I found out is we should be getting those papers ahead of time so that we don't even have to ask those questions. We should be getting the copies of financial interest statements for people serving on boards and authorities. And I didn't realize that. So I've been here since, you know, 2000, I never knew that. And so going forward, I hope we make sure that they're included in everything that we get, any packages that we get. But part of what I am most concerned about is I have never seen council members, never seen council members, get dragged into a race with the mayor's office where we disrespected one another, where we jumped on social media like two-year-olds and tried to, you know, jump in the conversations. I've never seen us do that kind of stuff. I've always seen us treat each other with respect. And what I've noticed over this past time, the sense of decorum in this council and with members, some of them are newer, some of them have been here for a long time, what I've noticed is how brutal it is. And I'm going to say this, I have never trashed Ed Gany. I would never trash people. I don't do that. I may get upset, I may say we don't get along, there's, you know, tension between us. That's not trashing somebody. And so what I will say is I think that these jobs are difficult. I don't appreciate the comments I see in either of the candidates or any of the candidates' comments. And just saying things, just to say them to get elected is not okay. And just to say things about council members and your colleagues or to like comments or just to do things, it's just not okay. I mean, I would hope that we would hold the bar a little bit higher and set some example for the rest of the employees in the city of Pittsburgh. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Coghill.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm not going to remark on all of what Councilwoman Kail Smith has said, but I will remark on the police chief situation because I did see comments, I don't know, from other members, from other people, I believe, saying that a few council members, or I feel, I feel my name was implied, but ran Assistant Chief Ragland out of town. And, you know, I just want to remind people, it takes, I'm one of nine, Teresa's one of nine, so is Councilman Sharland, and anybody else who was in on those conversations. From what I remember, you know, Acting Chief Ragland made his rounds with council members. He felt very confident that he was going to win the support of at least five council members, and I quite frankly felt he probably was too. So, you know, he did a 360 for, I don't know why, to tell you the truth, but I will be glad to bring him back in here, I believe he's still an employee of the city of Pittsburgh, if any members have any doubts.
And you know the place, both.
If any members have any doubts as to what went on there, I'll be glad to bring him back in here. I'll go under oath with him in a post agenda if we have to do it to clear it up. So I'm not even going to give it another a thought. I'm more worried as to like the direction of the police force, but I did hear those comments and I felt strongly that I had to, you know, remark on those. So with that, yeah, I'm more interested in the direction that the police force is going now. Acting Chief Ragland is gone. It was his decision and solely his decision. So, and quite frankly, they tried to use council as a scapegoat because it was such a comical thing to happen, and for him to decide to move on was just crazy. Okay, that's it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any other members?
I'm just going to say one more thing back to that.
Second round, Councilwoman Smith.
Yeah, no, I just want to say back to that, that I also don't think that we should be using that position in that, public safety is a really challenging situation. And I don't blame anybody for the state of the police bureau in terms of the chief or not having a chief or how many chiefs we had. What I do blame us for is the way that we treat people, and that was one of my biggest concerns previously, is that we heard so many complaints from people and the way they were treated. And so I just, I don't want to keep bringing this back up and rehashing, but I'm just not going to be used for your political, you know, commentaries and your political stuff and saying things because you have an agenda. I mean, the reason why there is such tension, the reason why people like Donald Trump get elected is because of all these kinds of comments, all these kinds of tensions, these kinds of, like, you're not supposed to say a word or do anything. I mean, it's just getting to the point where people are so frustrated with us that they're looking for anything that's different and crazy, to be honest with you. They just have had it with us. And I think seeing what's happening here locally, I've had it with us, and I'm going to start saying a lot more, a lot more publicly, if we're going to continue this road. And believe me, I have a lot more. And so does Councilman Coghill. So I think that people should just respect the fact that we're trying to be respectful in going forward and working together. We're trying to keep what we can here with some sense of decorum and realize we're working with our colleagues, not our enemies, and that, you know, we may be on different political agendas or different political pages sometimes. And that's okay. That's what makes the world different. That's what makes us, that's what makes us unique. And those things are okay. I could just say a lot more, but I'm going to shut up right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other member? If not, we do have meeting announcements. This afternoon at 1 o'clock, council will hold an executive session on Bills 1709 and 1710 as relates to ongoing litigation. Also, this afternoon at 1:30, council will hold a post-agenda on Division Zero Annual Memo, which is chaired by Councilwoman Warwick. Then tomorrow, Wednesday, April 9, council will hold a pre-agenda interview at 9:30 a.m. for the Clean Pittsburgh Commission and the Housing Authority. At 10 a.m., council will meet for our standing committee meeting. Speaker's registration will close at 9 a.m. Wednesday morning. To register to speak at this meeting, please go to sign up form on the council meeting webpage. You may also call the clerk's office at 412-255-2138. Need a motion to approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.